Six o'clock, they've locked the car, make your order at this time. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda, I would need a motion in a second.
I do have addition to the agenda. On item fourteen, I need to have a correction that's stating ordinance zero or oh twenty-five, twenty-six dash three instead of two. The actual ordinance twenty-five, twenty-six oh two was for the permanent closure of the John Street Alleyway that we did last meeting. But we need to actually approve as an ordinance so we can file it at the county. So we'll add fourteen or thirteen A adoption ordinance oh two-five, two-six dash two.
Dash two or dash three?
Dash two. The one that's on the agenda will be dash three at that point.
Any other additions in relation?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have closed session for contract negotiations. Twenty-five A maybe?
Any others? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Recognition of outgoing Commissioner Ann Carter-Been. I'm sorry, excuse me, I skipped one. Approval of November the third, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see anything right off. And you did.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
I make a motion with approved of November third minutes. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Recognition of outgoing Commissioner Ann Carter-Been. At this time, I'd like to read proclamation in honor of Commissioner Ann Carter-Been for dedicated service to the town of Denton. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the town of Denton wishes to recognize Ann Carter-Been for her devoted service as a town commissioner from December twenty-twenty-one through December twenty-twenty-five. And whereas, during her tenure, Commissioner Been is working faithfully on behalf of the town of Denton and its citizens, offering her kind insight and commitment to the betterment of the community. And whereas, through her dedication, leadership, and steadfast support, she has contributed to making Denton a great place to live, work, and grow. And whereas, the town of Denton extends its heartfelt appreciation to Commissioner Been for her service, her positive influence, and the contributions that she has made toward the continued progress of our community. Now therefore, I D. Larry, Larry D. Ward, Mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the town of Denton, do hereby commend Ann Carter-Been for her outstanding service and express their sincere gratitude for her commitment and the town and its citizens. You carry it.
Okay, I would like to read a proclamation in honor of Mayor Larry D. Ward for distinguished service to the town of Denton. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the town of Denton wishes to acknowledge and express its appreciation to Larry D. Ward for his dedicated service to the citizens of Denton as a member of the town board for the past twelve years, and whereas he has faithfully served as mayor for the town of Denton since his election in December twenty-thirteen, continuing in that role through December twenty-twenty-five. And whereas, during his tenure as mayor, the town has received significant support through community development block grants, funding to assist local businesses in expanding their presence in Denton, grants for critical infrastructure improvements, Part F grants for enhancement to Harrison Park Playground, and has experienced unprecedented growth in both housing and business development. And whereas, in addition to his elected role, Mayor Ward has generously devoted his time and expertise by serving on numerous boards and committees on behalf of the town of Denton, including the Piedmont Triad Regional Council Executive Board, the Davidson County Transportation Board, the Navant Health Board, the High Point Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the Davidson County Economic Development Board. And whereas, as an elected official, Mayor Ward has been a familiar and welcoming presence at community events, shagging in Harrison Park, enjoying a chilled slice of watermelon, or sharing a cup of hot cocoa with whipped cream and cookies. And although he has not yet claimed victory, he's faithfully participated each year in the annual chili cook-off. And whereas, the town of Denton extends its sincere gratitude to Mayor Larry D. Ward for the countless hours he has dedicated to serving the community with commitment, passion, and integrity. Now therefore, I, Dina Grubb, Mayor Protem of the town of Denton, along with the Board of Commissioners, do hereby express our heartfelt appreciation to Mayor Larry D. Ward for his exceptional leadership and distinguished service to the town of Denton.
Thank y'all so much. It has truly been a privilege to serve as mayor of this town for the past few years. I have met so many nice people that I would that I would never have had the opportunity to meet. It has been a real privilege. I thank you very much. I'll use this to beat Kathy over the head.
Chief, you heard that.
Thank you. Administer oath of office to Mayor Scott Morris. Misty whip.
Please, you're holding Bible, please.
I'm holding for him. Left hand on, raise your right. I'm sure you know how to do this.
I don't have time to.
Repeat after me. I, Scott Morris, do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office as mayor so help you God.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of office of mayor so help me God. Mayor, thanks for keeping my seat warm.
You were. It's pretty warm right here.
Okay, Misty, you want to do Commissioner Grubb?
Yes.
Do you like scum for her? Right hand on, left hand on, raise your right.
Yes.
Repeat after me. I, Dina Grubb.
I, Dina Grubb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that you will faithfully perform
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner.
As Commissioner.
So help me God. And I need you to sign, Mayor.
Mr. Ward.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone hold lead for you?
No.
Left hand on, raise your right. I, Larry Ward.
I, Larry Ward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
That I will faithfully perform the duty.
Of my office as Commissioner.
Of my office as Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. I need you to sign. Thank you.
Now, since I've moved over a seat or two, we need to nominate and appoint somebody to fulfill the remainder of my two-year term.
I'd like to make that motion to appoint Ann Been Carter, Ann Carter-Been
A second.
For that position.
Your second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any ayes, that motion carries. Congratulations to this room.
We have to do re-swear.
Yes, we got to re-swear. And I assume you're accepting this. I do, it's okay, this is a re-swear. Does anyone hold lead for you now? Left hand on, raise your right. Repeat after me. I, Ann Carter-Been.
I, Ann Carter-Been.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of my office as Commissioner.
Of my office as Commissioner.
So help me God, so help me God. Thank you. And I need you to sign.
Now, as always, after a new election cycle, we have to nominate and elect a new mayor protem.
I make a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Dina Grubb as our mayor protem.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Glad to have you back.
Approval of signature authority for town of business in First Bank. Angel on that.
With the change of seats, Dina, I spoke earlier this week. It would just have to have a motion from the board that our mayor serve as a financial signature for the town, for bank financing, and for contract agreements with the town.
So I would entertain the motion.
Okay, yeah. Margaret.
Okay, so I'll make the motion. The first authority of the town business in First Bank.
And the mayor protem, Dina Grubb.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any ayes, that motion carries. Now, I'd like to take a minute of personal Just want to thank the citizens. You know, they got out and voted, where they voted, who are they voting for, but appreciate them. And still in me, I'm very humbled by the outcome. I won't say that I'm not happy to be back here, but I am. And I appreciate everybody coming out and supporting the town. We do have several priorities. I've talked to the different commissioners and different times in the last month or so. And, you know, we want to get some of these projects back going, back to the top. We've got some money that we haven't spent yet. We've got several projects in some form or fashion started and stopped. And we want to get these moving. We also plan to address empty buildings downtown. I'm going to form a committee next meeting to address some priorities as far as incentives or whatever it's going to take to work with the county, maybe others, to get those buildings leased, rented, somebody in those. Also, the two empty factories, Century Hosiery and Council Craftsman, got two big buildings there. Love to have people in them. I know the town hall bank has been on the back burner for a while. We're going to move it to the front burner. We're going to see if we get our budget, our audit in. We'll more than likely start with bathrooms for the park and interior, and then move in as is and do the rest as we have money alone, if the commissioners agree. I know that's one of their priorities. We'll make some sidewalk repairs. Can't wait any sidewalks, I think, in twelve years. We've got several sidewalks that need repairing and work on that. So we're going to move ahead with the process. Just want to thank everybody, with everybody working together, all the commissioners, working, citizens working together, we'll move forward. Next, I'll have a brief recess.
This is somebody starting by, the tax, and he's really, and this is all.
That's up to y'all. I don't like Barbara cutting on the tape this year. Buy a house, listen to this.
Can I get a copy too? Will you make me a copy of that page? When we approved it? Now, that will have it all.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, you don't have to. Council back in regular session. Public comments, anybody sent up public comments, thank you.
I don't think so.
There were none, I'll look.
Anybody like to speak? Here then, see you later. Public hearing consideration and adoption of zero-two-five-two-six-zero-three, is that correct?
Okay. So thirteen A was zero-two.
Okay.
And this is the ordinance that you guys approved at the last meeting, and it was to close that alleyway. The alleyway closure was approved, but we just didn't have it in ordinance form for us to be able to file that with the county for our attorney. So that's just will prove based on ordinance that it is a closed alleyway.
Okay, just need to prove that.
I make a motion to approve the alleyway closure of John Street, parcel zero-seven-zero-five-four-zero-zero-three-zero-zero-zero-one.
My second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any ayes, that motion carries. Now I'm on regular perting, right?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Public hearing consideration for zero-two-five-zero-two-six-zero-three. Ordinance for Board of Commissioners, town of Denton, permanently close alleyways, Andrew Dinkin.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. This is, second time it's coming for you. Last meeting, we actually called for the public hearing to be held in consideration of currently closing an alleyway. This alleyway is located out of Burnin' Avenue. And Mr. Hilliard is here this evening. If you have any questions that you'd like to speak to him about, there is no easements to have to be in consideration. There is no reason for safety for closing fire that we did not close this alleyway. So it is staff recommendation to move forward with this closure. It was advertised four weeks consecutively in the Denton Orator. Days the property owners were contacted by mail and the property was posted. If you have any questions during the pelecon, I will be glad to answer them.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak for or against, please step up. State your name and address. You want to tell us what the benefits? This be your cue.
Yeah.
Come up in front here if you will.
Kenan Hilliard, and I'm at four-four-four Servant Road in North Carolina. And this is Burnin' Avenue. I don't think we really have an opening yet.
Not yet. Plans to build a home.
Yeah, plans to build a house and closing the alleyway. Will let me move the house over, I guess, six foot or so. So that's my point is.
Yeah, attorney, they have to get a quick claim deed for the half and half, or how does that work?
So whenever you close the alleyway, half of it goes to the property owner on the other side, and half of it automatically comes to them by statute.
Okay, by statute.
There's no deed.
There's no, okay.
So once it's closed, we notify the tax department. The tax department splits it for GIS purposes and adds it to each child.
Okay. Anyone else for or against? Not our public hearing closed. What are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve the closing of the alleyway.
My second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any ayes, that motion carries. You're good to go. Item fifteen, public hearing for consideration of voluntary annexation request, four fifty-two and four fifty-four, North John Street, Sam and Ann Hale. Property ID six-six-six-eight-zero-two-four-seven-seven-four-zero- Property ID six, 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 eight, zero, two, four, seven, seven, four, zero, six. And six, 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 eight, zero, two, six, seven, one, four, zero, seven.
If you recall in our, I think it was our August meeting, September, August, we actually um, rezoned this property from Lake Nashville to R eight. For the purpose of building a home on the property. Mr. and Ms. Hale have um, since divided the property to make two parcels. Um, giving you the new address of um, four fifty-two. And then they're also requesting in four fifty-four to be annexed and group um, access of sewer for each parcel. The plan is to connect sewer for the newly formed parcel and then later they connect the front parcel to sewer. I've worked with um, Michael Hale, Ms., looking at the connections for where the property uh, lays for the sewer connection. It already has one type of water, so we will um, do a C L to then order to put water there. Project that's ongoing in that area that we'll hear about later on this evening. And so um, we hope to do it all within the same timeframe and having other lines late. Um, Ms. Hale is here, so there in Peloton, if you have any questions, you can ask her here about that.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please step up, state your name and your address. Lidian, you want to tell us a little bit about what you're gonna do?
We're gonna build a house back there. Currently have one now, we're gonna put water back inside. My husband's sister gave me, wanting to have me own, that's why we do it. She passed away, that was her request.
Thank you, Lidian. Anyone else want to speak for or against? If not, I would declare the public hearing closed. Anything wishes of the board?
I make a motion. I make a motion for the public hearing, for this to close the um, for the annexation, not the annexation of the alleyway. On John Street.
Further discussion? I'm a favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and the ayes have most care. Review and approve new contract, ready construction bid on West Race, yeah, what did that word, I was in jail. Mr. Hogan.
Okay, so last time I come to y'all uh, on November fourth. About getting uh, Randy Harvester and Steve Smith to do uh, the upgrade on the jail. And since then, it's been years, Steve hasn't had a chance to get towards Randy Harvester wasn't able to anymore. So uh, during one of my ghost walks, I met David Jones and his work was like the uh, expanding of Elizabeth's. And he did a lot of brickwork around here in town. And so I asked him to go look at it. So his price isn't all far from Steve, which is nine thousand three hundred. And it's uh, consists of pressure washing inside and outside the walls of the building in its entirety. Parching with the mortar and that's that's a part that's really bad in certain areas. Like uh, when you look in front of the jail to the left side, the brick is a little worse than the other sides, I guess the weather part. Um, gets hit more. And then in the back, so he's planning on doing that in a lot of the areas. And then he's going to, he's gonna be able to do the whole thing where before it was gonna be in two parts. He's gonna take the bars off the windows and replace the windows. And relay the front left corner, replacing all the loose brick, reinstalling the bars. File down the door so it can close correctly, because the door's still good. And um, and then paint the exterior of the building white. And I asked him about making sure that when you parched it, it still had the brick look. And he said that would be part, hard to would be in the worst part, but it still would show the brick in the good part of the brick. And he can start a whole lot sooner, so we might see it up and looking pretty by in just a couple of months.
And he did, you said he did, Elizabeth's.
Yeah, when they added on, he did all that quick work. Yeah, during the ghost walk, Ken Jordan looking at all the uh, brick buildings and talking about their.
That's good.
So I'm asking.
Is there an emotion?
Yeah.
Well, I'm making a motion that we go with brain construction to repair the jail.
Any further discussion? I'm a favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed no, and the ayes have most care. Let them go to work, Barbara. Resolutions, declare surplus across the public works. Ms. Jenkins.
So Michael has a few items listed, um, you guys have provided a list of these. It's just things that they've been cleaning up the shop that kind of realize they're not using or maybe have no value using anymore. Part of it is you'll see as meters. And with meters, instead of listing them on Doug deals, um, Michael has asked if we could send those to the scrapyard here in town. That we can get more money by scrapping them than actually bidding them out on Doug deals. So those three, I, those three listings for meters will be sent to the scrapyard.
But they bring peace, Michael, you know?
It's up and down, but I figure people that bid on them still scrap them. You know, we can take them just straight down there and scrap them ourselves.
As remember, lifestyle brought pretty big, didn't it? Pretty good?
Yeah, glass, it it goes up and down, it's up pretty rough.
Don't worry, I think that usually stays up for a good knowledge.
It's been several years since we've done deal in the aisle, but we could, I mean, we could definitely look back at what we received it. You got surplus it and I can let you know what the last time was and what it's actually ranging to pounds or cents.
It just seems like every time we're scratching on Doug deals, we get an argument with it and call them.
How many there are?
Yeah, how many there are. They want us to drag them out of the box and count each and every one of them. They want to fuss about some of them way this, some of them way that.
Yeah, just whatever's best, that's it. I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to surplus what the public works has. However, whatever's best.
Any further discussion? I'm a favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed no, and the ayes have most care.
I was gonna ask Michael when he divided the league machine.
He, well, he is report, his report. I approve up the North John Street. Bobby Sammy. Bobby Sammy, Bobby give it. Don't tell Mike I said that.
There's a proposal and a, a map on the back. And I've got a larger map here, we need a. This way, uh, this proposal is to extend the ten inch water line from up close to Third Street. All the way to uh, down to Fletcher, then a six inch all over to Fletch, uh, Frick Street. And then Frick Lane, then a two inch, a little bit farther to catch uh, one more meter down there. And then to extend a uh, a sanitary sewer line uh, to catch the uh, necessary to catch those new properties down there, the sewer service. I'm glad to answer any questions. We are, I did, we did also put in there the connection there on four, uh, the T. For maybe a future uh, future extension of that water line. We need to. And what this will do, this, this, this project will, will loop the neighborhood's uh, Fletcher back in there. Those are all dead end over there. This will loop all that through there and it, it will boost the uh, the uh, amount of water. The quantity of water in that area uh, which will really help that over there, that area. And we're gonna kill the two inch water line. There's an existing two inch water line there that, that we're going to kill once we get the new line in. And kill it, then we're gonna kill a section of the six inch line that's in there now.
So we, we won't be gaining any pressure, this, this be gaining volume, is that right?
Yes, we'll be gaining, I, you, you'll gain, you'll probably see some pressure increase because of the friction loss. Uh, you, you'll have more water, a larger line, so you won't have as much friction when the, when the water's running. If you, you'll get, your, your, your pressure will stay, as far as static pressure, you won't see any, any change. But as far as the pressure staying up during the time it's running, you should see an improvement in that.
What, what would be the difference if we just hooked on to the six and went down to Fletcher?
Well, I mean, we can run some numbers on that and let you know. Uh, you, you won't have quite as much volume of water there. And if you're planning on doing anything on the main street side in the future. Uh, your, the ten inch is definitely gonna help you over that way if you decide. Uh, I, I know y'all are looking at some uh, modeling of when you get that. They're probably gonna wanna put some more water over on the main street side there and that, the ten inch will definitely help that.
True.
It gives you a lot more options over there. You get a, you get a business in over there, you need more water, you've got a lot of options there.
What, you gotta ballpark bigger than. What it costs. As you have a plan.
Well, we, we didn't, we haven't got, I haven't gone that far yet. We're just doing a proposal, but that'll be the first thing we'll bring back with is estimate a cost estimate on it. Uh, it's, it's not gonna, I talked to the contractor, uh, it's not, uh, the ten inch line is not tremendously more. It is, it is higher priced than the six inch, but your, but your money's in the pipe. It's gonna, it's gonna cost not a lot more to lay it as it does a six inch line. Digging the ditch doesn't cost a lot more for a ten inch it does a six inch. Uh, now we've got some different things in here. We've got some sewer line and we've got some uh, some six inch water line too that went in the other proposal. But uh, just soon as we start, that's the first, that's the first item here to do is to provide y'all with a, with a updated cost estimate. And then we can decide how you want to proceed with the uh, with the uh, other contract.
Do you remember what that deal was? Hundred fifty thousand?
I did not bring that, but uh. He was, he was substantially, the one that got it was substantially owed him. Uh, he was about, he got it by about ten. I, I'm sorry I didn't bring that, but if uh, I can, I can get that information.
Michael, you'll wait in here, any word?
The contractor was gonna go on to do the board number forty-seven for the sewer, for the house that y'all just handed it. So we're gonna have to have that done. And if we lay the ten, we'll kill the old six and the old two. So we can get rid of two old lines from one good line. And it would loop in some of our hybrids and like you said, if y'all ever wanna take a, a ten or eight across fourth, the Thai North Lane to help feed Andy's state. Since they won't go down harder on the paper though. We could go with the four to do the same thing. And hopefully help depression on spring and roll.
That, that section of our needs needs a little help over there. It's, it pulls it pretty hard when that pump comes on.
And all this does is get us estimates and.
Yeah, what, well, what this does, this, this proposal is including, the, the first section is the estimates. Uh, then, then there's a survey, we're gonna have to survey some additional, additional property on each end. Uh, we're gonna use the survey we did on the first, it, it says down at the bottom that uh, the part of this, we, we're, we're gonna use the drawing. The, the stuff we did on the other project, but we've got to extend up, up towards Third Street. We didn't, we'd stopped at Fourth Street. We didn't, we didn't serve anything beyond that, so we're gonna have to survey enough to tell, we're gonna kill that two inch water line on the, on that end. And then on the uh, uh, Frick Lane side, we didn't, we didn't go up there, we're gonna have to look that way to the end. Uh, we're gonna do the sewer line and, and extend that two inch up there to catch all that. And it'll, and it'll really clean that whole section up and give you a loop. You won't have a dead end section in there anymore. Your water quality will be better.
So I guess I'm just trying to get my head around it. If we, if we approve this, first thing you're gonna bring back to us is the feasibility and the cost estimate.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll bring you a, bring you a, I'll, I'll get with that and, and get, get some good numbers. Uh, then you, then you can decide if you're gonna stay with the contractor, that, that be at the other job, or that we need to do, do something different. Yeah, if we need to do something different. And that'll give you a, a good cost estimate of what it will.
And, and am I reading this correctly with what you have there at the end? That um, that you've already built sixteen, three oh nine sixty-two. And if we go force that amount of thirty-nine.
No, that was the other contract was, was separate. That's, that's the work that we did on the other. That was basically to draw the plans, get the permit, do the proposals, to bid it out, take the bids in. That, that's what that did.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was, but we didn't charge, we didn't bill you on anything for the construction, because they'd never start, so we didn't do anything with that.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the updated North John Street water improvement project.
And just, just bring back how long until we decide to go different route?
Okay, and that's what, what I'll do is I will get with uh, give, and, and bring you a proposal, I mean, from the contractor. Then, then you can look at it, check it maybe and decide what we will.
Any further question? I'm a favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed no, and the ayes have most care.
I will ask one question. Do you want us to do that before we, before we do any survey or anything? You want us to bring you that proposal back? Get that in and then, then you can decide if we want to go to the next step.
Yeah. Yeah, you do that, brother.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to appoint ten representatives serving the Davidson E D C board, Davidson Transportation Board, P T R C, and I want M B O.
So for Dixon County E D C board, they meet monthly and Mayor Morris will serve as representative, but we need an alternate to serve on that board. So if he's not available, then they wouldn't be there in their place. They're welcome to go to every meeting, but we do need someone who will serve. We want to, when we go through the list, do we want to stop and?
I do want to tell them.
Okay, so we need an alternate to serve on the Dixon County E D C board. They meet twelve o'clock the third Monday of each month.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion for Dana.
And they meet the third.
Third Monday.
At twelve.
At twelve and it's, it's usually at the government building in Lexington, but here lately it's been.
I think it's gonna be at the Health Department, now and for a while. And it's fried chicken, it's always fried chicken.
I'm booing.
That's called a German buns. Any further discussion? I'm a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, and the ayes have most care. What's your next one?
The next one is Davidson County um, Transportation Board, Mayor Ward is currently serving and he serves as vice chair. And his term does end June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So if the board pleases, they can, you can appoint him to continue that until that term ends and then we'll elect someone at that time.
Vice Chair, right, Larry?
So I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'm a favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed no, and the ayes have most care.
We need a delegate to serve on the P T R C board and they meet quarterly, am I saying that correctly?
No, you may move ahead.
Monthly, P T R C delegation. Um, anybody, committee anybody from the board that you would like to send or, I think that one's a big community too, if I'm not mistaken, or delegate from the board.
I entertain a motion. That'd be fun.
I'll make a motion for the mayor. That's accurate.
Further questions? Take eight of them, that need to be proposed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes say a no. High Point NPO.
They meet monthly, they do in person, they still do offer Zoom. And it is, um, what day of the month is that?
It's on the Tuesday. So this is the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday. So you would have an option of going in person or actually by Zoom if it's not able to make there.
Where's your dad, Larry?
Uh, it switches around, sometimes it's at the, uh, uh, place down near the High Point College. Sometimes it's down in their, uh, City Hall.
Okay.
It moves around.
Oh, it's the High Point place?
Yeah.
So it's High Point NPO, I guess. But I mean, it was different region.
It was in Lexington last month.
Okay. I entertain a motion for someone.
I would be willing to continue that if, uh, see it that way.
I'll make a motion that Larry continues that, that's what you like to vote for.
I'd like to do that one.
Okay.
Any further questions? You say anything, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and the ayes say a no. Okay. Need to call for a special hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty, six thirty?
Yes, because we'll be doing this in conjunction with a meeting following our plan in Zonmore. Their meeting will be held at six, they'll conduct business adjourned, and we'll meet.
Okay. Public hearing in consideration, is that one town property located at the corner of Peacock Avenue and South Jones Street? We've been in violation for about forty years on that thing.
Well, there were, um, in reviewing it, the minutes, I look back at when we had the property and we had an impound lot there. And it, we did have it rezoned to, um, it's not coming to me, there is a type of rezoning that's for public owned property. So that we can allow for different things to take place there. Storage of vehicles, which is what we've had for an impound lot. But because it is not gonna be used for public storage, we'll have to have it rezoned, um, to light industrial or to move forward with, with what the plans are for that property.
And it's light industrial across the street, correct?
Across the street, and then, once you get to the railroad, all of that's light industrial as well, so.
I entertain a motion to call for a, uh, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to call for public hearing, December eighth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty. For the rezoned town property located on Peacock Avenue, South Jones Street.
Second.
Further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and the ayes say a no. Department of Defense, please, Chief, Chief, hit, uh, yeah.
I'll stand on air.
Chief James. You don't have to get up, you can sit there, I'll let you sit there, we'll, we'll give you some personal preference there.
Mr. Blair, Commissioner, thank you, good to be back with you after two months of sitting in the recliner. Uh, hopefully soon I'll be able to walk again. Uh, wanna let you know the radar sign that we had positioned on South Main Street was down the last. Uh, I checked the V long city today to see whether the cost to get that cover replaced to protect it from the weather. Hopefully I'll have some figures on that soon. I suspect it was juveniles, we're checking cameras roadside to see if they picked up anything, but so far I haven't looked back from the owner of those cameras to see if they captured anything. Uh, the white twenty twenty six Durango that you graciously approved is, uh, on the road, it's the same officer chief. Uh, we actually brought it tonight, so if you wanted to look at it, turned out very nice, the detail looked very good. Uh, very proud of any dog we trust on the back. And, uh, we played a good role and we'll continue to keep all of our features playing. Uh, most important thing to tell you tonight, that, uh, between life injury and a lot of the time with, uh, role play scenarios and other things we ran candidates through, we have selected a person to fill the, uh, office of captain. And that is, uh, Richard Kester, who's seated beside me. Uh, he actually started work today, he's not swimming in yet, we're waiting on his paperwork to return from Raleigh. Uh, he's married to Caitlin and they reside in the Gold Hill area, Rowan County. They have two daughters named Bella and Zoe. They attend the refuge church in Kannapolis. Richard serves on the safety team for the church, and his wife serves in youth, youth ministries at the church. Captain Kester previously served in Granite Harbor Police Department for sixteen years, and has held the rank of sergeant for five years. He's attended Rowan and Barris Community College and Piper University, and he is still working to complete his bachelor's degree. And hopefully, uh, he'll be able to get that done very soon, but that is one safe welcome to, uh, Captain to be soon. And we're glad to have you, and anything you wanna say, sir, before we go.
I'm excited to meet everybody, uh, I'm just excited to get to work and help everybody else. My door's open if I can ever do anything for you guys. Just may.
We're glad to have you.
Yeah, well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Take care of the chief.
I'll do my best. He, he's spent my show for your reason.
Do you write leaves, I love you.
If he needs me to, I will, I don't think I can trust him to do a whole lot of that.
Thank you, brother. Would you have questions, boy?
Any questions from board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Morris.
So, um, as you have before, so that's the calls we ran this month. Um, up just a little bit, but, um, mainly the only things going on is we, uh, replaced batteries in the tanker this week, um, they died on us. Um, the wash machine, um, had a water leak, it's got a bad drain, so we borrowed a part for it. And then, um, so normally the way we do our, test our hydrants, um, we do twenty percent a year. When we started testing twenty percent, we did this year, we noticed that a significant loss from the previous years. So basically, if we touch it this year, we won't pull it again for another five years. Um, so when we reviewed those numbers from five years ago, there's been a significant decrease. Um, so what we did was, we tested the whole system, system wide, iron, iron hydrants and handies. And what we found is a large drop in mainly iron system, not so much handy system. So I comprised a spreadsheet of what the records were in thirteen, seventeen, and twenty five. Because those are the years we tested every single hydrant, that way you can compare apples to apples. Um, and I've forwarded those to the manager, so she can send those to the engineers, and maybe when they start this hydraulic study, we can get some answers. We do how they significantly passing water and don't really know why or where. A lot of Clark's acres, probably the Clark's acres across one oh nine, mainly Clark's acres. Um, our, our gauge doesn't pick up anything below two hundred fifty gallons a minute, but we have several that did register anything. Which won't even fall a hand on. For water suppression, it's an issue. For water suppression.
Any questions for Chief Morris?
How's Director Mr. Ha? Hello, Marlene, I'm bringing here to play while I talk.
I didn't wanna think of that, too.
We fixed the wiring on the information booth. We all feel safe now, split it up. I mean, it's for, put it on the timer, you know, photo sales, it comes on and off. Worked at water treatment plant, we changed two pumps for Jason, got his other slow pump in the lagoon going again. Uh, working on putting up Christmas lights. Exsterior leaks, I worked with engineers for two days, uh, wooten on back to some of these sewer lines. And I gave him my copy of that fire hundred report that he's talking about, the wooten to go on and give to his, whoever's gonna do the hydraulic study. We started working on getting up leaves and the leaf sucker come out. I sent it to John Deere again, they informed me it was the battery cable and the battery. I just put a brand new battery cable and a battery in, that's what it is. I talked to him again today on the phone, they was getting ready to hook the battery cable up, and he said he'd let me know. So hopefully in the next day or two, they'll figure out what's wrong with it, get it. Uh, remind the guys, was pushing some stuff in water, or, uh, dump. Got a piece of Christmas matting of some kind, wreath or something wrapped up in dry shap on the backhoe. That's took the backhoe out, so we can't get a backhoe, with the leaves over the backhoe now like we was doing. Uh, them parts are backward. They told me today they would let me know when they get them in. So we're down to leave for a can of backhoe. Uh, we started serving some more right quick, but this line's already gonna come out.
I go start burning again.
I was gonna bring a little line in, and a regular work. But they told me, I can't believe our, our Caterpillar backhoe is outdated now, I mean, it seems like we just bought that one.
We did it about twenty years ago.
Well, they don't keep ours for it on ship anymore, so it's ordered. He's hoping it'll be here Wednesday. And hopefully by Wednesday I'll know something on the sucker. Really hope they let me know something on the sucker, because they wanted coming up on auction. Well, there's one for sale for what, six thousand?
Coed's got one. Coed's got two, I think he's got one with the trailer and all. Twelve thousand.
Yep. So we fixed everything else last year that was wrong with it. And if we can just, if they can figure out what's wrong with it, it's great. There's nothing really wrong with it, if it didn't just crank.
It works, does it work good?
Works great.
It works.
And I mean.
When it cranks, it works.
When it crank. It, it, it's like you, when you turn the key on it now, I mean, it spins over so hard, the wires will start glowing red in about four seconds. And, and you cut it off and let it sit, and, I mean, I put a two hundred amp battery booster on it, I know it's getting juice. I put a brand new starter on it, that didn't help nothing, put brandy wires on it, didn't help nothing. Put brandy salinoid on it, didn't help nothing. Soon as you hit the starter, I mean, it's just, whoa. Whoa, and then the wires go and red.
So what hap, last year you had trouble with it too?
With this equipment, we're gonna have trouble.
I know, but I'm just saying.
It takes it, uh, some abuse. Cause people put rocks, sticks, they put everything in them leaves, and it just sucks them right up, and it just goes so retarded, retarded.
So what was actually date for leaves, getting leaves up?
They mean bags.
No, she said.
What was the date? Where did you start?
Started November third, according to our calendar.
So, but you really hadn't got started?
We got the first round up, and over Thanksgiving, people really putting some more out.
They've been blowing.
Well, just one in a town.
Yeah, we've been blowing around, we saw a backhoe and a pickup getting up leaves, until the backhoe comes down on me last week.
So we'll extend the date for people?
No, we catch up, yeah, we can get one going, we catch up pretty quick. I mean, it ain't stopped anybody from putting them out.
Yeah, but it's, they're blowing everywhere else.
I did reach out to, um, Lace Pro, who does our trash service, they actually do a leaf service, to just see if that could be a temporary fix for us, and she's getting us a quote.
Yeah, I just wonder if the quote from them is gonna be more than it would buy them.
Good buy more, yeah. Can we borrow one?
Not as I know of, I've called every rental place they own.
It's called City Lake and City Thomasville.
Well, I don't have any real big contacts over there, most people I know retired.
Stay on them, cause Barbara's staying on me, so I'm gonna stay on you. I got a big humongous file out there, and I don't want them getting up in the night.
I'm staying on John Deere.
You can hold that there, hold, there, hold, City Thomasville.
Yeah.
We talked to several of them over there, like I say, most of them I know retired.
Yeah, there was some there, he's been there for years, recent years.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call them, cause we have Barbara, Barbara, Trenton, Thomasville, cameras from Lake, and we used to borrow a lot of stuff.
We, like I say, I'm supposed to know something by Wednesday.
Okay, you don't get it, I mean, uh.
I'll get it.
Any questions for Michael? Okay, Jason, Water Plant Superintendent, let me get your name, buddy.
Good evening. You know, we got a lot of things going on and working on, and continuing to work on the next couple of months. Uh, biggest thing is getting ready for winter, which in our industry is always tough. Winter time, that, that water just doesn't like treatment, it's colder, especially under fifty degrees. Uh, just takes more time to get the flock to fragulate and settle out, uh, so kinda working on some things that we can do in the short term to help us hopefully get through this year. Um, some of the stuff we've done was we've, uh, put the bulk phosphate tanks back into service, uh, we were ordered to have mini totes. Um, since we're able to do the bulk tanks now, it'll save us a lot of money. Ordered that bulk instead of smaller units, and it's gonna save us a lot of money over time. Um, with doing that, we, um, refined and updated the, the whole phosphate feed system, including monitoring at the plant to make sure that if there was, we cleaned out that tank pretty good, but just make sure if there was any residual in there, the old stuff, not that it's bad, but if it mixed in, wouldn't do as good of a job, uh, what we need to do, but it's going good. I've got them checking that phosphate readings every four hours to make sure it's gonna maintain. I'll likely have to do that for the next couple of weeks, just to make sure. Um, we, we extensively, or came up with our taste and odor control response plane, uh, so we can kinda stay on top of that. Kinda catch it as early as we can, when we can, um, updated SOP, wrote up on that. Um, we're gonna probably likely have operators every four to eight hours, just kind of, you warm the water up a little bit, the smell, make sure the smell is earthy or anything, kinda know if there's any turnover in the lake, catch it there, hopefully sooner before it gets through the whole system. Sometimes you're able to catch it before then. The other things we got going on, uh, the baffle wall, I've been talking to Mike about that. Um, if, if we could get that installed and it works, we may be able to hold off on putting those, uh, plate setters in that we talked about. Uh, one of the biggest things holding us back on that is, I guess, the engineering, the cost of being, you know, hundred fifty thousand dollar per basin that adds up, so. These baffle walls would be a lot cheaper, um, they're kind of like a three phase serpentine where the water comes down. Essentially, what we're trying to do is slow the velocity down, and the longer the water's in there slowed down, has more time to settle that, the flock out, the dirt out, before it gets to the filter, so. Um, if that works, it'll save us a lot of, lot of money in the long run, hopefully it does. We're working on, though, getting the filter one effluent actuator, still has not been replaced, I'll reach out to the contractor again today to find out what's going on. So hopefully they'll be back with me, last time I talked with him, he said he was just gonna put us on the books, um, but this, we're going on three or four months now, so I'll start pushing a little harder with that one.
It's like a big book.
So, and we're also, uh, working on the skate upgrade still. Um, one of the bigger parts of that is gonna be the chlorine feed system, uh, being that that's chlorine gas, we're gonna have to have it engineered, so to say, to get skated tied into that and flow pace it. Uh, thankfully, the, the, uh, the, the company that's doing our skater integration is a certified engineer when it comes to that, so we wouldn't have to hire an outside engineer that'll save us some money there to get that all going and installed. So we're kind of, it works with that, getting all that tied into the chlorine feed system, where it'll be flow paced with everything else. Be a lot safer and, and, once again, reduce costs more than accurate doses on that. We had, um, uh, an operator, and he's sitting Wednesday for the physical chemical testing. Um, if he passes that, he'll be able to be a backup ORC for the wastewater discharge, the new discharge, so hopefully he'll be able to pass that, and that's a look for him. We're, uh, talking to Mike recently about the, we also got to do the filter one and two, the, the surface leaks to help wash the filter washes. I think he said we're waiting on parks for that, just the surface leaks, uh, it just seems like it takes a while to get parked sometimes, so hopefully it'll come in soon. Going in the winter, that's another thing we're doing, is, uh, we're, we're washing the filter frequently, where I've got them running, or if they run up seventy two hours, but whether the drainage is high or anything else, we're washing them. Just in case there's anything that builds up in the fil, filters, we wanna get it out before, you know, causing any taste or odor kind of thing. So we got them washing the filters every seventy two hours, but once we get the surface leaks put in, that'll help get all that stuff out more where it's kind of built up over the years. Uh, working on hopefully getting the backup pumped in, we put a backup on our permagnet, and that one is now failing. Uh, permagnet is one of our key chemicals to prevent taste and odor, uh, to neutralize those aggronics, so, um, we did have to put a rush on it. Um, and he, he's checking with the warehouse today. Um, and he, he's checking with the warehouse today to see if it's around to get here as soon as possible. That's one chemical that we're gonna definitely feed, especially this time of year with the wild temperature swings. We got, we're working on, um, longer term with, I know we've talked about putting, uh, like a belt press system or centrifuge system in for the sludge. Um, to kind of look some things over. We might could just add four drying beds and process the sludge out there. If that works, which should, that'll save us having to put funds to buying a centrifuge unit or a belt press and save us some money there. Working on trying to get the interior of the building rehab, look better paint, flooring. Um, just if, if we have any tours and people coming in, just I think it's important that a good look looks good. Um, water can be great, but if you don't know water industry, you walk into an older plant that just looks bad, it just gives people a bad impression and that. Try and get that addressed with a nice new floor and paint, start there.
You ever try to paint yourself, Jason?
I, not this time, I don't think. I didn't, it hasn't gone quite well in the past, so I believe will, will likely, if it's not too much, see about getting a, a professional out there this time. Uh, cause ideally I've got different planes where first come in, there's operators, picture of the certification, so you see who the operators are there. And then when you walk up the steps with the new floor and paint, uh, the monitoring station will be kind of right there, so the first thing you'll do. It's like a plain overview and the, the, and the processes of, you know, the, the water, so it'll be just a good look for just tours and people coming in. So I'm, I'm gonna, but once we get that done, I'm gonna actively encourage public tours, just so people can kind of see where the water comes from and how it's done. Definitely looking forward to that. So yeah, I think if we're afraid to definitely get a professional thing.
Yep.
That's pretty much the bigger stuff that we're working on the short term. Um, if we could just get those, yeah, the baffles kind of installed, even if it's just one, one wall we'll start with, and then before we quit in the other two tiered ones, um, we can kind of start there.
Jason, on the taste and smell.
Yeah, well, we're trying, well, well, with the, the baffling walls, what that's gonna help with is slowing the water down coming through the basin. Right now, it just kind of comes right through from the, from the flock mixer, I mean, from the, yeah, from the flock, flock mixers all the way through to the filter and pump. And that flock, that some of you guys have seen where it's coming over, the filter just washing over. Uh, those baffling walls are kind of phased like in three serpentine, so the water will kind of have to come through and route its way around. And then on the final side, before it gives them, goes into the filters, there's gonna be a ba- a wall right there with just a little hole for just the, just the water. Ideally, it'll come through and all that sludge and sediment will settle out before it gets to the filters. That's like right now, that, that water just comes through, there's nothing stopping it. So when the water gets cold and it doesn't coagulate, it, it, you, you form a good flock, it just doesn't have time to settle out like you want to, cause it's coming through fast. And especially once the water gets under four or fifty degrees Fahrenheit, which we're pretty much about there now.
Have you got the carbon milling fixed or you're telling them the temporary milling?
Uh, we're, we're feeding out the temporary building, but it's working great right now. Um, so we'll likely see if they just put something more permanent right there, um, cause it's, it's working really good right now. We're in exactly what we need to, and it's not clogging up and, uh, it's recirculating when we're shut down, so we haven't had any problems with that and it's, it's doing good.
Any questions for Jason?
I tried to nation down on the silver plane. Yeah, he showed you the baffle wall on your bill for going out to the creek, or if you're gonna climb us here, handle it. And that's pretty much what he wants you to do.
I can email you the design I drew up and send it to you. I ain't working on it too, cause e- email you kind of what, what it looks like, I drew it up on.
Like I said, trying to get prices out on the mantle, so I thought once we have a price, we can send it once you guys see what we're looking at.
Can you build them, Michael?
Yeah, we built all of them, it's worth it.
Okay, will that be engineered?
No, that's, I don't think we have to have anything engineered.
It's, yeah, I think the, the highest end, those costs will be like twenty-five hundred per basin with the material.
It's only gonna go to eleven or ten. Eleven on last long time, time was last. They won't be, I left it in the firm.
But I can email you the.
Hate for you.
Yeah, hate might be, but yeah, when we get the cost estimate from the mantle, we'll send it out to you guys shortly.
Thank you, Jason, thank you.
I just need the sign off script written down.
Mr. Branch.
Mike and the crew and, uh, us at the treatment plant, we've been working diligently on our clarifiers and we are days away from having the tubes repaired. Uh, we did replace a foot bearing and the drive unit on clarifier number three. Uh, we have reassembled the drive system and the chain system on the clarifier. While the crew was down there, we discovered some, uh, nuts had rusted away. So I'm having to order these weird shaped nuts, uh, that, that are gonna hold up the, uh, trough. Uh, we did visit the outfall line. I tend only visit there when the snakes have gone away. And we did find some broken manholes that the, uh, the farmer hits, cause they're out in the middle of his field. So we repaired a broken manhole lid and cleaned up around the outfall where the wastewater enters Lit Creek. Uh, Mayor and Mayor-elect, we went to, uh, we met with the manager, Mike and David. Uh, we met with Labella to go over all the projects upcoming and present. And our regular work and maintenance at the wastewater treatment plant and the pump stations. And lastly, David will be sitting for his grade two collection system operator on Thursday. So he's moving right along.
Questions for Troy?
I say you're gonna get your bar spring by twenty twenty-six.
Hey.
It'll be a year.
I hope y'all enjoy it.
A year, three years.
It'll be a year since you's here. There's ten birthday in April.
Is that it, Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Troy. Administration poll.
For the month of November, we have a total of one thousand ninety-nine, um, fields that were sent out to our customers. The total gallons billed was four million fifty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, which billed out at a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and nineteen cents. We had, um, an additional three accounts that were filed in our system that billed out at a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Total gallons unbilled was seven hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty, and those are for town-owned properties. Handy water gallons used for November was, um, thirty million one hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred gallons. And that billed out at fifty-four thousand four hundred and two dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, I have also included, um, the report that breaks out, uh, by month, going back to, um, February. Uh, Robert maintains this report. I did not go in and change what these headings state. We have a lot of previous reports and I'm probably very familiar with that. I did include some additional reports that she gave to me, which, you know, breaks out the usage by month for, um, institutional, uh, locations. And, um, I thought that might be of some interest to you and, uh, help to better understand. And then also the nonprofit locations by month. She's also got the usage for those locations as well. So maybe that'll be of some use to you. And I would also like to thank our office staff for coordinating, um, the parade entries, hometown vendors, and love lights, which will be coming up, um, this weekend. Look forward to, um, that, those events.
Okay, we'll get, I don't know, uh, year over year or to see what the new meters have made an impression or not.
Do you want, if, if I may, Morris, do you want that listed out? Just, um, say twenty-four and then by month, and then year twenty-five by month?
Yeah.
What you're looking at, see?
Yeah, I think that'd help me.
Gallons and cost, or just both?
Yeah, I mean, just a button, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, and tell us, when was the meters, all of them put in or the ones?
Majority have been in since August, well.
It started in April, didn't it?
It started April and saw them, and so majority by June.
So we should tell August of last year, August of this year?
Yeah.
Should be relatively close.
I think we have. At, which will be a little different, just because now we are actually following the meeting at the end of the month. Whereas before we were doing like fifteen, fifteenth, and now we are just about like, um, around the twenty-seventh. So we're getting a true month reading, which will be easy for us to look at, like what we're sending from the water plant monthly and that too, so.
Any questions? Attorney, update.
Good evening. The only thing I wanted to publicly update was we did get the letters out to, um, the Smiths regarding the property that we wanted plans for either rehabilitation or proceeding with condemnation. So they are in their notice period on that and we're waiting here back to move with their proposed plans. If the plans are not submitted, then we'll maybe bring it back to the board to decide to move forward with condemnation.
Emily, it's sport.
I have a copy of just updates I've been providing throughout the month. And then, um, a couple of other things briefly talked about. We did have, um, meeting with our sunny engineering to review the North John Street project, as Bobby shared with you earlier. Um, Heather Miller with Labella has been present to review all of the projects that we have going on with them. And, um, she has reached back out with, um, questions that we had asked her to follow up on, so I'll have some updates for you tomorrow. So I think she's gonna provide some through today. Um, today's been a little crazy day, um, getting other things submitted out that needed to be out by today. Um, but Labella met with, um, as Troy said, Troy Branch, Michael High. Now Commissioner Ward and Mayor Morris for us to review the projects. That'll be a time to waste her for a while, so you guys, please excuse me if I get it wrong. But, um, she did review those in detail and as to where we stand with each one, so we gave some dates. We would like answers back on certain items of each project. So we're hopeful to, to keep that moving forward and as Commissioner Hudson did share that the bar screen project is projected to be delivered in April. And then it's a four to six week delivery on that, I think that's our biggest, um, concern on that project. Um, looking at our parade, I know we had some back and forth conversations regarding, um, um, throwing candy. I did provide you guys with part of the rules that they have for the parade on that. And at, you know, when people registered this year, they did receive a copy of those, um, stating what the rules are. It's not that they can't provide candy to the, those at the parade route, but it was asked that they actually walk and hand those out. Um, and looking at the safety for those that are in attendance was the main concern for that. What did share with you, what Lexington and Thomasville's rules are, High Point as well. And those three towns that basically have the same rules, just turned around a little bit, highlighting certain areas of that. Um, our insurance company did say that there should not be any issues, however, um, we do set ourselves up with potential probability in situations when things would go around. And he tends to err on the outside of caution, so it would be, you know, at the recommendation that we continue as a handout. But, um, we can certainly address that as board would like to. Doctor did finish his reports and sh- and submitted to the state. So as soon as those are diagnosed, your care will be present, I think last year it was at our January meeting, so, um, it'd probably be the same timeframe this year. Um, we have received a letter for appointment for our planning and zoning board for Tom Bean Lawson, um, to be reappointed to serve as the ETJ. Um, person on the planning and zoning board. So I think that we have to also accept him as submitting, as being submitted for this board. You guys want to do that now or if you wanna do that with our appointments in January to those boards? Just wanna let you know that he, he will be filling that position again this year.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve him and get that out of there.
I made a motion to approve Tom Bean Lawson's reappointment to the planning and zoning board.
Certainly.
Any questions? I'll vote for say aye.
Aye.
I'll please move it and accept it.
Thank you, good afternoon. Um, we've also received an invitation for us to, anyone to attend the, um, dessert auction that will be held Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at our Denton Sonic Lodge. And, um, soup and sandwiches at six thirty, auction begins at seven fifteen with our mayor as the auctioneer. So you guys come out, get some great desserts, have a good time with the community. Look forward to doing that as never attended, so I look forward to that.
You're, you're on the spot now.
That's me, not Danny, right?
We will also, um, I know everyone just kind of changed seats this year, but those three elected will have to do their two hours, um, requirement for, um.
Ethics.
Ethics, thank you, um, for ethics, but there is also a course for local elected leadership academy. If anybody is interested and wants to, um, wants us to sign you up for that, it'll be a good refresh of course, um, or in, and also cover any updates that may be coming out. So please let us know if we can register anyone for that. Copy of our rules procedure are here. There is, um, in looking at the situation that we have this evening, as far as how do you appoint someone for a vacant seat that, um, we still have time with. What we did was by, uh, your challenge and statute, you did have the option to, um, make the nomination and vote for that person. There are other situations, like in cases someone were passing away on their seat. And then also if, um, in this case, Commissioner Dean also ran for the seat. So if there was no other person available, we could do it by application. But what, um, I'd ask Paul to do is kind of draft up an amendment to go for that whole procedure, just so we have it in writing, how this goes forward, that you have those options. And, um, if there's any questions in the future years, that's how that would work, so we'll bring that to you guys at the next meeting. Um, I did receive on Wednesday afternoon, an update, um, from the line, finally on their projects, so that's not have time to review it over the weekend. So I will review that, send it out to you guys to look at. It's something that we could potentially, um, if we need to have met before we post the special call meeting Monday night. We make it out that as an agenda item, um, before that is actually posted out. Hopefully, um, we have the true number for what we still would owe on the water meter project and.
They're just not getting them to you, and it's a month ago? And they said there's a meeting, that's a long meeting?
Well, what they did is they reviewed everything that I sent back out to them and also with the, um, returns that they came to public works and look through. So when they sent the information to me the first time, I said, this is still not what we're asking for. We need a final cost. Meters in the ground, meters returned, what is our final cost? So that's what they said back. Once I repeat it, I'll send it out to you guys, so I'll let you know when it's coming either Monday or Tuesday, or Tuesday or Wednesday for this week. All right, any other questions that I can?
Have you got us a meeting scheduled with Root?
No, I have not. As I said, I didn't get, didn't schedule, I apologize. My intentions was to call them today, but I just about half the day with a migraine, so, um, I'll probably catch up the rest of the afternoon. But I will schedule that with them as well.
Can you do the proposed amendment to the rules regarding the appointment of the, of filling vacant seats? Can you send those to me a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely will. And then you also have your monthly report from ACE. Um, we, if I've stated in the past, we are working with a new agent with them. And we've kind of directed him for details on projects that are open. This is kind of just monthly highlights, is what they may have added or abated. But in going forward, um, probably can give you more of a history as to what is going on with the projects that seem to be taken along the time, like, take care of. If there's anything that you guys want specifically, feel like, so we'll make sure to introduce that.
Do we know anything about the one forty-eight former road?
No, nothing to update right at the moment, though.
I see I'm abated, if anybody says we don't get summons, tell them we do too. I said my purpose is abated, so I'm good to go.
Okay.
Hey.
They don't discriminate, do they?
No. Mr. Comments and concerns? Mr. Bean? Anything?
I know that we mentioned, and I was just, we're just running, I went back to this thirty minutes. They mentioned about having picnic tables released to the public, is possibly doing that. Where are we on that?
So what we're trying to come up with is thinking something like legal legacy type of campaign so that we can push that out to individuals, not only like picnic tables, but identifying, like maybe there's another area where a bench could be used or the memorial blocks, getting a cost on those is what we want to run them out for, so they have an option. Not everyone can probably do a bench. They're quite costly now. But just so that they could see what, if they wanted to do something for their parents or grandparents or loved ones, that they have different options.
And it also brought to mind, because I've had a few recommendations, may include or anything in memory of that.
Right, right.
That's hard to read out fast enough.
We should have something together because we've got the cost on the benches and things like that. So next meeting, just something that we can promote out, maybe to know.
The cost on engraving bricks.
Yeah, how much are those?
Because we got, we got the bricks in stock.
So I guess that's what we'll have to see, is if the company that we've reached out to will take our bricks and do.
Good night, might take a hang line.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, I think, about twenty months. But
How many bricks do we have in stock on this model?
Two hundred, probably better. That'll get you up in line anyway.
Yeah, I think the last time that we did the bricks out, it was at a cost of a hundred dollars, and that was for the engraving of the regular size brick. There are some different sizes, like I think it's a four by four maybe, but it was at a cost of a hundred dollars and it's still a reasonable cost for us to have.
Their cost?
No.
Okay, that's their cost.
Their cost.
We're supposed to build some profit there for.
Yeah, for us to be able to maintain.
Rubber mowers or something.
Yeah, so, but we will have a list of those items, and I'll send it out before we promote it out, so you guys know what's available.
And one other question I had, we mentioned about paving. Do we have a timeline on that?
Chris has not, not sent me the contract, the
I've spent a month too, and he's gonna start right away.
Yeah, let me reach out to him tomorrow. I've heard from him right before the holidays, and he was asking for the contract from Paines.
And what about the guy up there at the park, at Johnson Park? When is he gonna start?
He's gonna start in January.
Okay.
Those are my only questions.
Okay.
Mr. Ward?
No.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
If you were back from hand, um Wait, wait, okay, I'm just, just making sure I haven't missed something somewhere on that, so.
Mr. Hogan? You have something? Mr. Hicks?
I'm good.
Go ahead, does he have something?
No, I was thinking what Daniel was thinking.
I had a couple of things. Angel, if you would, how about get a meeting up with DOT and Duke Tower, see if you can get some likes of them, one or two, try. I gotta thoughtful on that.
Is that the only area that we want to look at?
The what?
Is that the only area that we want to look at with them?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's what we talked about before. And I would personally would like to see uniforms for the public works, water and sewer with their names on them.
So going through that with a uniform company?
Yep, get a surprise on that in January if you can.
And if we do that, I mean, I think everything down there should be labeled. Because like, there was a public works guy came in the other day, and I could see his shirttail underneath, they had on a hoodie, you know, that was not labeled. So I would have to say, because I didn't know his name, I was like, hey, hey! Michael High needs you to call him. He had called down the store, said, do I have a guy down there? So it would be nice if everything was labeled, so that we know who we're talking to.
Prior, when we had the uniform company, they provide jackets as well.
To have their names still, good.
It was only like two companies, I guess, Centos and United Brands or something?
Yeah, we were with Centos, and so we can get across from both of them.
And I'd like to revise the flagpole project, where we're gonna get, I believe you handled that. You know, Lanier's Grocery, they paid for the flag, welcome to Ant and Lanier's Grocery. Because I think we've got thirteen, it's either got old flags on it or got the holders.
If I may back up for clarification on the uniforms, you had said with their name on it. One reason we switched and put staff on it is because we were having such a changeover in staff that I had uniforms that could not be used because it had their name on it. So we went with staff, and I can still use those uniforms. So just, I wanted to point that out, if that's a deal breaker or not.
Yes, it's a deal breaker. I think it is maybe. I mean, I think if somebody's at my water meter and I don't know who it is, staff don't get to me nobody.
Well, I mean, going forward with the uniform company, they do there.
And they peel them off and put them back on sometime.
They do, so with the uniform company, but we had on ours just had it out, so, but we can
Yeah, and I think the jackets always look nice.
And Angel, can we get a complete list of all the projects? How much money we got, what's the balance we got, what status they're in?
If I can ask for clarification on the flagpole project, is that for, we want to look at adding or replacing any of that or just the towns? Or just look at adding the additional ones that are sponsored by someone?
I'd say probably replace them all. We don't think they've got four or five up now, but Michael, do you have a question?
Two things on your form. Can we keep our duties with the tenant and seal with their names on? And not worry about Centos if we go with them, because you will freeze yourself to death in them. Just let's just buy everybody a nice warm coat and we'll put the tenant in from K M on there. Because if Centos coated, they are required, you'll freeze to death.
Maybe we'll get you some yellow ones like ours.
Well, that would be good, bro.
They're worn.
I would say, I took the flags down at the fire station, police station today because the clips were worn, and they broke, so I'll get them a new one.
Is the rope still there?
Yep.
And I'd like to see the back door opened, to the parking lot.
Well, you know, I still feel that it's, well, you say that it's not. I guess that would be, you know, up to the board, but it is still a concern. We have a situation the other day where a gentleman came in the front door, came right down the hall, and I think he went right into Paula's office, and
But you got locks on outdoor, don't they?
Well, we do, but during the day, I mean, the door that goes into my office has a lock that has a keypad on it, but like the cover showed it's not locked. But he just walked right in, and we're standing in her office, Robin, Elizabeth, we're not there, they're on lunch break. But it, you know, it unnerves you a little bit when someone is standing in the middle of your office and you're not expecting them to be there. You know, if we open the back door, could it possibly be that we open them and let them come through the museum area and come to the front instead of coming down our main hallway?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that problem. I just think they should be able to park at the parking lot and walk in instead of parking at the parking lot and walk around.
So it would be okay for us to route them through the museum?
Yeah, I don't see a problem. They say museum, pick them up.
And, and I also think that you all need a working lock on each of your doors.
We do have lock, oh, sorry, I saw a bug out of the corner of my eye. Nevermind, about jumped, it's a state bug. We do have working locks, but like during the day, if I'm working with my door closed, I don't have it particularly locked, but I mean, we can, it's
I think that would not be, I mean, if you're concerned about safety, I think that would be
It's just, like I said, it did unnerve us a little bit. Fortunately, I heard the conversation and I came up front and I realized who individual was. But it, you know, it was a little offsetting, not, not knowing what was going on.
With the, the cameras, you can at least think he's coming in, because I know
Yeah, and that is one thing, I actually just recently got a small monitor to put in her office and mine as well, so we can see the cameras ourself and can see people coming in. Because, I mean, I hear stuff, but I don't hear everything. I don't hear all the conversations that are going on. But I just particularly did that day when I knew she was up front by herself.
You definitely need monitors to look, both of you do. So that you can, so that you can see, because it's like at the store, and I've got, with all the cameras I've got, you know, I hear a noise and we make a note of look. And, and I say after us too, because now that we've got the annexes open, it, it's not man, but, but we do have an alarm, a bell that goes off when anybody goes in. And then everybody looks to see who that is, and then somebody will head over. So that we, so that they're, you know, they're in there less than thirty seconds by themselves. So definitely monitors. I, I just assumed that you all had those.
We had not, but something that we added to, and a lot of this come from, we sat through an online class the other day that gave a lot of pointers, things that you need to think about. So we just play a ticket for granted, I guess, so, and plus, I'll share more of that with you guys.
And we'll be sure we update our cybersecurity.
Yes, we have reached out to Tavis about that as well. We have
After Thomasville.
Yeah, Thomasville was scary during the United meeting.
It was?
Yeah.
And we thought we were in pretty good shape.
Yeah, what was really something was one day at Walworth, when he said that the guy on the other end had a European accent and it sounded pretty creepy, but we told him, you know.
We have asked Tavis Curry to make sure where we stand with our cybersecurity, but, you know, you're only as you're only protected as good as until the next person comes along sometimes, but new updates and stuff. We do have off-site security that are updated, so we can be backed up very quickly, quickly, or have to go down, but as far as
I think if they take it down, you can't go back.
Yeah, they call them ransom, like Thomasville, I think it took them a while.
We have
Just talking about backup, don't mean you do it right.
Correct.
They're lucky, yeah, that too.
Correct.
Yeah.
This one's not supposed to be. We've had this in place for several years.
Okay.
It depends.
That'd be, it's getting to you worth several years.
Right, well, sometimes whenever they attack your system, you have to shut your entire system down, and sometimes it can attack your backup too. And that's the concern, is just making sure. The issue was, which I will tell you, the cyber task force was amazing. I mean, literally within twenty-four hours, we had this task force on ground with like temporary computers rebuilding, giving us access to work with wireless cards and borrowed laptops. And it was pretty amazing, but it was a scary thing to deal with. Not fun.
Yeah, the man would tell us something that that being It opened our eyes, didn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for anyone? I'm gonna go to announcements, then we'll go to the closed session. December fifth, Hometown Christmas Love Light, service at six. December sixth, the parade, vendor market, ten to two, Christmas parade at twelve noon. December eighth, planning zone board meets and a special call meeting for us at six-thirty. December twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, town hall offices are closed, and January one, town hall offices are closed. Any new business, old business?
I was gonna mention that Historical Society is doing illuminaries in the park for those in memory of or during the, thanks to December twenty-second, twenty-third, and then twenty-fourth, because I thought it'd be special if we had them in the park on Christmas Eve.
I will also add to that that the love light service will be a little bit different this year, so I hope everybody can attend. I think they have well over a hundred love lights in memory of on our own. And then for the vendor's market the next day, we've got forty vendors, which is more than years past. Christmas parade, we still have some entries that came in today, so I'm not sure why that would be up to.
Anything else? Nothing, we're in closed session. Back in regular session. Anything else, town board and board? Entertaining motion of adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll favor it, please.
Yeah, I watched that fire go from the department, department